Good evening, welcome everybody to the March 3rd, 2010 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. Excuse me. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2010 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have two public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is a zoning request to rezone approximately .45 acres located along Bravil Pike from RS10 to a PCD, Zonkyo Zayabuda is the applicant. Good evening, Ms. Ealy.
Thank you, good evening to you. The first public hearing this evening is a public hearing to consider a rezoning request for a little less than half an acre lot located along the north side of Bravil Pike, just west of Minerva Drive. The property currently is zone CL, or is currently zoned RS10 and is what's permitted in RS10 zone are residential uses. It currently has a single-family house located on the lot. The properties to the north and west are also zoned RS10 and are part of the Cypress Single Family Subdivision. The properties to the east and south are zoned CL, Local Commercial District, and have that zoned since 1984. Directly to the east continues with this property. On the corner of Minerva Drive and Bravil Pike is a commercial strip center, which has a gas station, automobile repair, hair salon, restaurant, and grocery store. Also located within the CL zone are various commercial uses in this area, and the CL zone currently acts as a neighborhood commercial area. The applicant wishes to rezone this lot, so that, to PCD, Planned Commercial District, so that it can be redeveloped. The applicant's intentions are to remove existing single-family house and build a 3,136 square foot strip center. This strip center would be able to house two commercial uses. Currently, the applicant is definitely interested in putting a dry cleaner in one of these units, but the second unit would be what he intends to lease. You'll notice in your program books that there is a revised list of permitted uses from what you saw when the applicant first brought this to your attention. The list of permitted uses are as follows: dry cleaner without a drive-up window, a bakery, retail, or donut shop, a barber or beauty salon, general retail, general electronic services and repair, pet shop, flower and plant store, and financial services. The Planning Commission may want to review that list and make sure that they find that these are appropriate uses for this lot in this area. Each, the applicant has proposed to meet the minimum parking standards for each of these types of uses in the program book that you have, all except for the beauty or barber shop. In the zoning ordinance, we require that there are three parking spaces for each employee employed on a larger shift, but the applicant's proposing that you reduce that number to one parking space for each employee employed on the larger shift. There have been some revisions to the plan, to the site layout, and Mr. Gunther will go through those changes with you as part of his presentation just after I wrap this up. I did include some photos of the site in your materials, and I would put them on the screen if the computer would do that, but I guess it's not going to. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing after Mr. Gunther's presentation. If you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, staff will be glad to answer those for you. And at this time, Mr. Gunther, would you like to come up?
Kevin Gunther with Design Resource, working in conjunction with Huddleston Steel. And thank you, Margaret Ann, for your presentation, and thank you, Planning Commission members, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'll keep this simple. I feel like the site is simple. I don't want to belabor a whole lot of points, but I did want to point out some things prior to the public hearing about this application. The applicant has owned this property for some time and has had a desire to start his own business, and therefore he's brought this application for you to achieve that. And one of the things that I wanted to point out is that the applicant is not only taking this course to invest in his own business, he's desiring to invest in the community and invest in the neighborhood and the surrounding area. He is adjacent to an existing commercial node and would like the opportunity to see his property become part of that node. Some of the changes that we have done in relation to the staff's requests, and I must say, the applicant has listened very carefully to staff and us about design issues, and they've been willing to really adjust this application to meet specific design criteria for the site. One of the things that they've done is they've made the building small to make sure that it fits in the site. And I do think that the word "commercial strip center" may be a little misapplied here, in my opinion. This is really a commercial building with two uses that the applicant is proposing. And he's become willing to commit to very specific uses, as you see on the list there, and in discussion with the Planning Commission and some of the adjoining commercial businesses. The issue of a convenience store and a market came up, and there was some discussion with the applicant, and they said they'd be perfectly willing to drop that as a use because some of the surrounding business owners thought that that might form a competition that he didn't necessarily want to create. So the applicant's been very sensitive to not only permitted uses, but to, as I said, design issues. He's scaled the building down. This is a little over 3,000 square foot. It's an all-brick building. He is giving the property a wide margin of buffer on both the north and the side. He's willing to give twice as much of a landscape buffer as normally would be required. And he's also providing a parking ratio, which is approximately one space per 1.75 square feet. And that is something that, as is indicated in the application package, as each use would come in, we'd want to make sure to comply with the parking, and I think what we've done is try to give you a little bit of a buffer, so that these uses would have more than adequate parking. If there's any questions about specifics of the site design, the permitted uses, the applicant is here this evening. And with that, I'll just conclude my presentation and allow you to have your public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Any questions of the staff or the applicant?
I do. Mr. Gunther, did you change the trash containment location, or has it always been there? It seems like I don't remember seeing it there last time.
Yes, sir. The trash containment was originally located in part of the front parking area. We realized that was not good design, and we've located that trash containment at the side of the building, as well as committed to a screen around that with a fence and additional landscape. And that was one of the changes we made as we went through the revisions on the project.
And it seems like we discussed before, if we were to approve this, that would the applicant be amenable to some access from the neighboring properties? Should it become commercial zone?
I think that, if I remember correctly, the discussion regarded the fence, because we realized the fence would be a good screen for a residential property, but if a adjoining property became commercial, perhaps the fence could come down. The applicant is open to that.
Mr. Wilson, were you referring to vehicular access?
Well, he answered my third question, but what I was referring to, Mr. Gunther, was really was access, vehicular access between the properties. Thank you.
Well, actually, Mr. Wilson, this design does not lend itself to that possibility, because if you were to have a vehicular connection, you're going to lose two to three parking spaces, and parking on this site is critical as design.
Okay.
Mr. Gunther, on the trash container there, that would be a dumpster, I presume?
Yes, sir, that would be a dumpster.
Due to the proximity of the residential dwelling to the immediate west of this property, do you know what hours it would be serviced?
That would be a typical private arrangement between the applicant and the trash collection service. You know, if that, I'm sure that there could be some type of, if there are specific concerns about that collection timeframe, I'm sure the applicant is willing to try to work that into their contract with the trash collection service.
Mr. Gunther, in a lot of instances, trash compactors are picked up early in the morning, four, five, six o'clock. I think that might inhibit the neighbor next door from enjoying a good night's sleep. Maybe we could put in something that it would be picked up during business hours or prior to, but not really early in the morning.
Is that okay with you? Yeah, I think that that's probably a good idea. I think the applicant realizes that, too, that, you know, putting some type of timeframe on when trash service could occur would be a good idea.
Another question, sir. What kind of buffer is there now between the partial next door, the commercial partial next door in this existing lot?
Let me get my illustration out, so I can answer you correctly. There is a, currently a 10-foot landscape area between the property, the existing commercial property to the east and our property. Is that the side you were requesting?
That's what I'm referring to, but when I looked at this on-site, it didn't seem to me that there was much of an actual landscaping. The buffer is there by footage, 10 feet, but there's not a lot of plantings in there. Is that correct?
Correct. What's there now is, would change when the site is developed, because, I mean, there would have to be really a regrading, and, you know, pavement and landscape and building would all be new applications on top of what's there now.
So you're going to bring it up to the current standards?
Yes, sir.
All right. And Mr. Young, the east side adjoins an existing commercial zone, and typically, we don't require buffering between commercial uses and commercial zones. We put our emphasis on buffering between commercial and residential, which is where they put their really emphasis. So they have more of a standard landscaping approach on the east side, adjacent to the existing commercial. And in all fairness to the applicant, that area is currently has a, basically, a chain-link fence, and that's it.
That's what I think we were, that it's commercial next door right now, and basically, there is no buffer between the residential and the commercial existing.
That's right. There's no-
Development predated the current codes quite a bit.
So the buffer he puts in would be an improvement.
Well, the landscaping, well, all the landscaping will be an improvement in that respect, because there's, just, the area is devoid of landscaping. I don't think there's any trees or shrubbery of any consequence on this site at this point.
Is there any particular reason why the building shifts to the east side versus toward the west side?
Well, that was in relation to the idea of giving as much distance as well as, you know, providing the landscape buffer. We wanted to create as much distance we could between the actual commercial building and the residential parcel to the west side.
Also, Mr. Wilson, we don't yet have the design, but I think that's an area where they're going to try to use it for stormwater detention and water quality. The design on that part is not complete, but that area is in discussion with Mr. Huddleston, the engineer on the project, to be Mr. Bill Huddleston. They're expecting to use that area to the west and around the dumpster area and along that buffer to the west and in the back for those opportunities. Again, the design has not been done, but it looks like there's some feasibility in terms of size to meet stormwater requirements there.
But is it because of the elevation that they're choosing, other than the buffer issue, that they would, they could choose the other side, the west or the east side for that as well? I mean, they could grade it so drain, so they could use the east side just as well if the building was moved over?
Again, I think that has to do with the desire to try to buffer by distance the property to the west that is currently and will remain as residential.
I guess my thought is that dumpster sort of polished me there on the residential side, but the flip side of that is the building's going to be closer, and the dumpster's going to be on the commercial side.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gunther.
Thank you.
Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules that we conduct our public hearings by, in case you have not been here before. We'll open the public hearing, invite anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal. When you come to the podium, please state your name and give your address. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and make all your comments or questions toward the Planning Commission and not members of the staff or the audience tonight. If you do have questions, the staff will make note of your questions and try to address those at the end of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hello, my name is James Barden, and I live at 1606 Cypress Drive. Our property is directly behind the property in question, and I have a couple of concerns. One is, of course, the stormwater, and I was just wondering how it's going to be diverted and, because this is a very low, flat-lying area, and I know that property, when it rains very hard, water stands right at the edge of the house that's there now. And so I'm concerned about, with all the impervious surfaces of the parking lot and the roof and everything, that some of this water may end up draining back into my property. And another concern I have is security lighting. And right now, where I live, I'm being pretty much bombarded from three sides with commercial and residential various forms of security lighting, and it's incredibly bright at night in my house. These are the concerns I have. I looked at the plans, and it seems there's going to be a fence or a visual barrier, which I hope that will be constructed. But I don't know who to, who can address these issues, especially the lighting, for me, but I'd be happy to listen to the experts on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barden. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adelot, can you address any of Mr. Barden's questions?
Yes, and I'm going to start with the security lighting. Recently, with our site plan review enhancement requirements that the Planning Commission has passed, and the city council is scheduled to conduct a public hearing tomorrow night and consider on first reading the ordinance adopted, one of the provisions was to reduce the foot candles from on-site lighting to less than one foot candle at the property line. So part of the effort is to address those kind of things. He's not the first person who vocalized those kind of concerns with site lighting. So at the property line around the perimeter, the light generated by this development should be less than one foot candle, so that it doesn't have the bleed-over effect. We will, at the site plan review stage, be reviewing the site lighting, and we do that generally for any kind of commercial development. So if Mr. Barden would like to stick with us, we'll be, if this is approved, we will be reviewing a site plan in the future, and that's one of the things we will be concerned about. The second item he discussed was the standing water and the stormwater. We're familiar with the property being very flat. Ms. Lucille Delbridge, she has spoke with me many times over the years, and she has told me of her concerns about the stormwater in the area. The area is very flat. It's just one of the areas in our community that is literally pancake flat, and water doesn't run off very well. In discussions with the design engineer who will be working on this project, Mr. Huddleston, he believes that he should be able to capture water that's currently flowing onto the site and that will be generated on the site. In any event, he's going to have to meet our stormwater ordinance. This is a small site, and it may fall under the small-site criteria, but all the same, he's still going to have to design it. With the warning that Mr. Barden has given us and that Ms. Delbridge has given us, we will be watching to see that we have this drainage as a good system as we review future site plans. Now, that was two items that he spoke. Earlier, there was a little discussion by the Planning Commission about the timeframe for sidewalks service. I'm going to tell you, that's always a challenge, because what will happen is the, as time passes, people forget. Management changes, there are new drivers and new accounts, and people don't always remember, oh, yeah, I'm under an obligation, or the property's under an obligation. So it's one of those things that will, it will be an issue in the future. I can, I can see it coming. But it will give me ammunition, if you place it as a very clear condition of approval, if you were to approve this, that that is to be operated within certain, a very specific timeframe. Because if it's in the record and part of the motion and part of the minutes, I can use that with some future property owner, that you are in violation of zone ordinance when you do this and get yourself back into compliance. The alternative to place the dumpster where it was before was in the parking lot, which caused the solid waste truck driver to, really, to back into the street and it dominated his parking lot. That was, that was the problem there. The other way to put the building onto the west side and put the dumpster on the east side of the building between it and the commercial area has some merit, but the problem is you get into that area for stormwater design. So it's a fine balance. This is a very tight lot. This is a very fine balance that they have planned, and in the future, if this is approved, it's going to be a very, it's going to be incumbent upon the applicant to fulfill this with his future site plan and then build it according to plan. It's going to be a tough little site to work.
Okay. We might often note that Mr. Barden indicated that he already has quite a bit of light intrusion onto his property at this time, and there's really not much we can do to eliminate any of that. We can try to mitigate any additional problem with the new standards hopefully coming out. Correct, Mr. Adelot?
What we can do is, we can't help what's already coming on him, but what we can help or prevent is future, this site from making it worse.
Mr. Gilli.
Mr. Adelot, Mr. Barden, I also made inquiry about the barrier between the back of this lot and his property. Can you go over again how that would work?
The plan is to have a six-foot-tall privacy fence below the north property line and the west property line. And in conjunction with that, there will be a landscape berm and landscape buffer. This landscape buffer will consist of shrubbery as well as trees, shade trees, to make a combination of fence and landscaping to create a buffer. It will be aesthetic, but it also ought to be very effective. The fence will have the impact of creating a visual barrier, but it'll also help to discourage pedestrian pass-through. So I think that will be a big benefit to have the fence. Ms. Ealy has pointed out to me, and quite correctly, it is a five-foot fence, not a six-foot fence.
Should it be a six-foot fence?
Well, I'm accustomed to seeing six-foot privacy fences, and that kind of caught me. I was looking at that in my, I couldn't see the six as easy. I thought the six was, or the five was a six. Mr. Lamb knows what I'm talking about. He probably seen the same problem.
It was a nine.
It is a five.
Six feet is the more common, what we normally, standard height. Is there an issue with that, Mr. Gunther, with your client? I think six would be more appropriate.
Mr. Gilli, you talking about the back and the side, or is it?
Well, I think it should probably be both, otherwise it's going to look, it's going to look a little off-kilter, and protection of the back and the side should probably be the same.
Let me offer an idea on the fence design. The back, and that would be the north, probably should be six foot. The west should be six foot to about the 40-foot front setback, and then it probably ought to step down.
Let it taper down.
So it tapers down, so your parking lot isn't boxed in as you're trying to exit, because it would probably be better if it actually is down to maybe more like a three-foot fence, or maybe even tapers off to the last 15 or 20. But certainly, from the 40-foot setback, it ought to be, and on the back, it should be the six foot, but drops, stair steps down as you get closer to the street.
I think that would be legitimate.
That's done a lot, so the site impairment for backing in and out and turning in won't be right on the street.
That's correct, and it's probably more aesthetic, too, if it's viewed from the street. And the purpose of the fence is really not being achieved as much right there beside the street. Where the fence is going to be most effective is in the back, in the yard area, the rear yard area.
And it'll protect the rear neighbors from foot traffic going back and forth.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Chairman Lamb, I have one. Mr. Adelot, I think as part of the presentation, they have agreed not to have a convenience store on, as part of their permitted uses. However, as the application indicates, it does say general retail. Should we ask that that be part of the plan document or part of our motion, since it's not necessarily described in this application that way?
Mr. Halliburton, when in doubt, take action to make it clear. And I think that that's probably not a, well, that's probably a good idea, since there is some doubt on your part. It'd be good to make it clear so that there's no doubt in the future.
Any other questions? Mr. Adelot, I had concerns about this proposal when we met to consider it a couple of weeks ago, and I still have those same concerns, so I cannot support this proposal. And the same reasons and the same rationale holds place for that. So, any other questions? There's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion that we approve this application, subject to the fencing that was outlined, meaning having a six-foot fence on the backside and a six-foot fence tapered off on the west side. Also, as part of my motion, I would like to include in the plan document that the general retail would not include a convenience store.
What about the dumpster question? Hours of operation for the cleaning of the dumpster?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, Chairman Lamb. And include, as part of that motion, that the dumpster would not be picked up anytime after 7:00 PM or before 7:00 AM.
Okay, the motion is made. Is there a second?
Second, the motion.
All in favor, any capable saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no vote. The motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next public hearing. That is a zoning change request to amend the Garrison Cove, Section 5 PUD, for 13.5 acres from multifamily to single-family units, and rezone approximately 7.5 acres from PUD to RM12, located east of North Rutherford Boulevard and south of Higgins Lane, Old South Property System Development. Ms. Ealy?
Thank you, good evening again. The public, the second public hearing of the evening is to consider a rezoning request for property that's currently a part of the Garrison Cove Planned Residential District Zone. This property is located just north of Willowbrook Drive and just south of Higgins Lane. On the illustration that's prepared before you, you'll see that the area has been identified by two separate colors. The current zone, the current PUD zone, permits 150 multifamily units in both, in these areas combined. The units would be townhouse-style condominiums. The applicant, Old South, would like to make some changes to the current plan, which allows those 150 multifamily units. And the request is a two-part request. The first part is to rezone, or to amend, the PUD zone for the area shaded green. This property is 13.5 acres, and the applicant would like to, instead of building the condos, build 26 single-family lots. These 26 single-family lots would have the very same restrictions that the lots on Higgins Lane have, and so therefore, the houses will be very similar to what you see built along Higgins Lane. To do this, the plan development application needs to be amended, so what you have in your program book or in your agenda materials is a program book that outlines this request. These 26 lots will have access to Higgins Lane. That will be their, their way of coming in and out of the development. The applicant would like to continue allowing the southern portion, the southern 7.5 acres shaded orange on your maps, to be used as condominiums. But the change that he's requesting for that property is to rezone it from PUD, remove it from the Garrison Cove development plan, and zone it RM12. RM12 is the zone that the Willowbrook condominiums currently have on their property. If, once this property is developed, it will become a part of the Willowbrook Condominium Association and will be developed and managed as a total part. These units will not have any access to Higgins Lane and will not be a part of the Garrison Cove development. I know I've had many questions about that, so I wanted to make sure that it was clear that the, that the request is a two-part request to amend the PUD from 13- that the request is a two-part request to amend the PUD on 13.5 acres to be zoned from multi, or to not allow the multifamily development, but to allow single-family lots with the same restrictions as those in Garrison Cove, and then to rezone the southern 7.5 acres to RM12 to allow it to be developed with condominiums and access from Willowbrook Drive. The original application was approved in June of 2004, which currently gives the entitlement for these properties to have those condominiums on it. Jason Beavers is representing the applicant, and he's here this evening. Do you have a presentation? Okay. I don't think that they have a presentation for you, but they are ready and willing to answer any questions that you may have about the application, and either before or after the public hearing, staff will be able to answer questions as well.
Okay. Any questions for the staff or from the engineers?
Mr. Chairman, in the present condominium situated as today, how many units were allowed under the existing zoning?
The existing zone allows a maximum of 12 units per acre. So, oh, the current zone?
Yes.
It's 150 units total, and I didn't divide it, but let's see. Do the math in my head or on the paper here. About seven per acre, so if there's seven per acre...
I'm sorry. How many would be under the new proposal?
Five and a half per acre.
So you're downsizing the number of condominiums. Now, the next question is, how many units at 144 presently, how many units could be built under the new, under this proposal?
Under the RM12 proposal, there'll be approximately 52 units.
So you're dropping the number of condominium units from 144 to 52?
150.
150 to 52.
To 52, that's right. So 52 condominium units and 26 single-family homes.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a drawing in here that shows us, like, where is the access going to be for the condominiums?
What you can look at is, the only schematic drawing that they've given us is for the proposed single-family lots. It's called Attachment 4, and it's concept plan for proposed Phase 4. I've got it on the screen, so people watching this at home or in our audience can see what I'm referring to. And this just shows the 26 single-family lots and the access coming off of Higgins Lane, and it would be coming off of the westernmost portion of Higgins Lane, or eastern, easternmost portion, sorry.
But for the condos?
There's no schematic for the condos, because the request is to rezone it to RM12, which is a bulk zone. And when applicants do request an RM12 zone, they don't have to provide a plan at the zoning level. They will be required to submit a site plan at site plan level, but the PUD zone clearly shows that there won't be any access to Higgins Lane, so they would have to modify the PUD zone in the future if they were going to add that access.
Ms. Jones, let me, let me add, Ms. Jones, let me add...
I was curious. I'll find out how they're going to get there.
Ms. Jones, let me add you something. In your program book, there is also this illustration right here.
Right.
Okay.
Got that.
The area that's green will become the single-family residential lots.
Right.
And you can see that this is showing the old plan, the...
I understand.
Right. The area, this orange, is going to be zoned to RM12.
Right.
And if you look adjacent to it, you see the Willowbrook subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
What's going to happen is, they're going to make this area that's orange an annex of that Willowbrook development. So it'll come off of the Willowbrook Drive cul-de-sac there, and it will come through the existing condominiums or townhomes that are already built there. What they're doing is, they're basically, that has been a very successful development for them, and they're going to try to expand upon it. So they will cut off that, and they will never have access back to Garrison Cove. It will only have access back to Willowbrook.
So that cul-de-sac will just extend over to the orange area?
Actually, there won't be a cul-de-sac. It will be the private drives within that condominium development. You don't see them on this illustration, but they're drives.
But it'll come in from down there somewhere.
Right.
Okay.
It's the shape of a cul-de-sac.
Okay. Gotcha.
Mr. Steele, could you step up to the microphone, please?
Yes, sir.
The Attachment D shows the proposed landscape berm built to the west and south, generally speaking, of the, of what was going to be the townhouse development. Was that berm ever constructed?
Yes, it was.
Obviously, the berm would, probably the part down, that would separate the two apartment zonings would probably go away or be mitigated in some way. Will the berm be extended between the apartment zoning and the single-family zone? And we might be able to answer this in another session, you know, when we get into site plan approval, but I just wanted to ask that question right now.
It could be, Chairman Lamb. We would address that at the site plan submittal phase, but it could be, yes, sir.
Would you not deem that probably appropriate?
Yes, sir. I think going from our RM12 zoning to the single-family zoning, we will have a buffer requirement anyway that we'll have to present to you.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Steele while he's up here?
Mr. Steele, the restrictions for the new 26 lots, the building restrictions, are they similar to the what's in Garrison Cove at the present time?
The intention is they'll be exactly the same as what's in Garrison Cove Section 5, Phases 1, 2, and 3. That includes a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, a minimum home size of 2,800 square feet heated area, and that brick and other suitable materials be used, and it be subject to the review and approval of the Architectural Review Committee of Garrison Cove Section 5.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? If not, we'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Stevenson, and I live at 2216 Higgins Lane in the Garrison Cove back part of the subdivision. And I would like to say thank you. It is an improvement as far as moving the condos in that one area to residential homes, so I do appreciate that. My one concern, or my one request, would be on the current plat that you guys are looking at, it says that it's a PUD, which is a planned, I can't think of the exact word, but development where it could be commercial or something, even though we're saying that it's going to be residential. My request would be that during this, that we move it to a PRD, which is the Planned Residential Development, since they are going to be including that into what the Garrison Cove standards are. So that would be my one request. My other request would be that when they do do the development for the townhomes portion, that it is put into a motion that there will not be an access at any later date into the Garrison Cove subdivision. I know it's not part of the plan now because of the development, but my request would be that there would never be an access road into Garrison Cove from that townhome section. And then my next request is the berm. They are going to be moving the berm, which they stated, and cleaning that up and putting some trees. The probability or the possibility of putting up a fence, we have had some break-ins and some other things from some apartments, and I'm not saying it's their apartments. It could happen in a residential neighborhood anytime, but just that extra buffer between townhomes, apartments, and the other area into the subdivision would be nice. And then my final concern is, in the back of the property, I'm not sure of the name of the subdivision, but where the Gold Valley Drive area is backing up to the fence line of Garrison Cove, there is a wetland area back there already, and my concern would be the water drainage. When it rains now, there are, the lots that I live on, there are four or five lots that get a lot of water. Do realize that the back part of that is a wetland, but it's actually moving up into, you know, our property lines. So I would like that to be considered whenever you're putting that in, that those townhomes, the elevations or something, doesn't force more water into the wetland area. Those are my only concerns.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Carrie Casperi. I live at 1411 Owassa Trail, right on the southeast corner of that orange plot. I agree about that wetland problem, because there's a creek that runs back there. They used to have cattle that come and get their water there. When I first moved there nine years ago, and when it rains heavy, it does fill up and it comes up to the property line. I do have a culvert there to drain the stormwater, but several times, it's been quite, the water level's been quite high. And behind the homes on that cul-de-sac where I live, the water comes up close to the back of the property, too, when it rains heavy. And on my street, I called the planning commission, talked to a woman there on your committee or your office, and she said that she was going to have the engineers to check in on the water problem, the drainage problem. We have two large sewer drains from the street where I live, and even with that, twice since I've lived there, the street has been flooded with water, the covering of water over the whole cul-de-sac where I'm at. And the other issue, let me think a minute. Oh, I was told by your office that, she said condos or apartments there. There already are on Willowbrook Drive. There's a large stream of apartments. I don't know how many they had. They may have 100. It seems like a lot of apartments there. I drove down Willowbrook Drive and down that orange court that's labeled on your map, and there's, in the wetland area, there's a lot of trees there. And what I would be concerned about for the habitat of our animals that live there, the birds and the squirrels and everything, is that if all those trees were mowed down, we might have more skunks in the area, more wild turkeys. We've been having wild turkeys that come in our yard, and they're kind of a nuisance. And for the aesthetic, the beauty of the area, I think, in most, I live in, Eastwood subdivision is where I live, there's some scattering of trees throughout the subdivision, which adds to the beauty of the area. But I think if these things aren't considered when they're building, that it might decrease the profit value of our homes in Eastwood subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Kay Boyd, and I live at 2209 Higgins Lane. And what she said I agree with, but the one thing I do want to be, that I want you all to know is, I expect that berm to be maintained. We've had problems with the berm between Kroger and the back of, the entrance into Higgins Lane. The trees die, and it looks terrible. It's not mowed. I'd like that berm to be maintained without a bunch of dead trees and the grass knee-high, you know. That's really all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay. Close the public hearing. Ms. Aitlott, can you...
Yes, sir.
...say some items, please?
Ms. Stevenson brought up the issue of, can we change the zoning designation? Actually, the reason we zone PUD was because the original plan had a commercial element, which would be the lots backing up the Krogers would, had the option of being offices or of being a single-family residences or a combination. And that part is not changing. So this is still probably a PUD by definition or zoning laws. In any event, it's never, these lots will never be commercial. By zoning this to PUD does not in any way allow these lots to be commercial, because the commitment is and the program book is, and what's being considered is for those to be single-family detached homes on lots of 15,000 square foot, as described in the application. So that, there's no need to change the designation, and in fact, we advertised as PUD. If we were going to change it to PRD, we'd have to go back and re-advertise in order for our legal department to feel comfortable in moving it to our city council. And that is a possibility if you want to, but we'd need to have another public hearing to do it. The second thing about townhomes, no access in the Garrison Cove, this plan is very clear. There are no, is no access being provided to the property to the south, south of the single-family homes. There's no street connection. So in order to have such a connection, it would require an amendment to this plan in the future. So that would have to be done. About a fence, I'm not sure what kind of fence to put down there. Fence has become, in these kinds of single-family settings, they're easy for the developer to build, but they're always awkward for the individual property owners to maintain. They'll look at it in the future, and they may have a different idea about that fence. And I know in my experience with the city, when a developer builds a fence along the perimeter, it can become an issue in the future with the future property owners. So that's something to be cautious about if you want to make that as a condition of approval. Be very cautious there. The wetland drains, that is interesting. There is definitely a wet area, and we've known about it since this property was originally developed. I remember when we were considering the Higgins, or not Higgins subdivision, but the Baskin Brook subdivision, I think we had, some people brought pictures of turtles that came to us and showed us the wetland there, and very much desiring to keep it from being damaged. And what was done was, the drainage system was put in in a way that maintained its integrity as what it was, so that when the development around it, it's been by design kind of been left to be, to be kind of kept. What we'll see in the future, of course, for the area that's proposed to be zoned RM12 and for the other parts as well, we'll see a drainage plan. And it's going to have to be compliant with our stormwater regulations, but our goal is not to have any net impact upon the existing development around there. So we don't want to be forcing water into that wetland that's going to cause it to overwhelm the properties around it. We will probably be looking at a minimum-impact approach to the stormwater drainage. New water into that system can be destructive to the wetland as well if it's done wrong. So that's something that we will be looking at and returning to as a site plan. But I do, I do very clearly recollect sending photographs of the turtles, and so we've known about this. I think our street department, while the previous days we were talking, someone emailed me as Mr. Sam Huddleston, our staff, that the street department had been now to look at the system. They are aware that periodically, by the way it's designed, it will overwhelm, the drains will overwhelm the system for a short period of time, it looks like. Know homes are in peril. It's more of the drainage structures in the street, from what I understand. Mr. Huddleston may have a more elaborate explanation, and certainly, when we review plats and plans in the future, he'll be available to discuss this with you, if there is he. I think that was about all that I wrote down as issues. Is there any other questions you have?
Did you address the perpetual maintenance of the berm?
That's correct.
Oh, no. Well, which side do we want to be done? The, which side needs to maintain it? Does that need to be the single-family or the townhome side? In the future, that can be easy with the townhome side having the responsibility to maintain it. Of course, they're going to be more interested on their side of it that they see in there. But I think that would be something that we would look at anyway as part of the buffering, because that would be zoned RM12. They'll have an obligation to buffer on their side of the property line when we review the site plan. And our zoning laws is very clear. If you're zoned RM12 and there's a site plan for development and it's residential adjacent to you, if you are, it's your obligation to maintain your buffer in perpetuity.
Okay.
And that's a fairly recent adoption.
Any other questions?
I want to add this. I was a president, and most of you all were when this came through originally, and we felt that the Garrison Cove Section 5 plan development was a good development. It was a good plan, and it was something that enjoyed a lot of debate from the neighborhood. This is raw land, and since the subdivision has begun construction, some of the new residents have had a lot of concern about the prospect for the townhomes right behind them. I think that they, in second thought, they, when they woke up one day and found out about the townhomes, they've been very unhappy. I was very pleased when Mr. Floyd came into my office and said, you know, I want to rethink my development, and I want to put single-family homes in this area. I think it's a good compliment for Garrison Cove Section 5. And I think the trade-off being to put the part down there around the existing townhomes to be RM12 as part of that development is probably very appropriate. One of the benefits for that is, it will increase the number of units that'll be part of their owners' association, will help, which will help them to have a more economical owners' association to pay for their amenity package. And from that standpoint, I feel pretty good about it.
Chairman Lamb, I think we have pretty definite answers about most of everything. Comment-wise, it was brought up with the exception of the fence, and I think that's something Ms. Aitlott has sort of alluded to, that we need to perhaps discuss and see if that's something we want to require or not. And I think that's probably, isn't that the only issue, Ms. Aitlott, that doesn't have a defined answer to it, so to speak, of the concerns that were raised? speak, of the concerns that were raised?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Aitlott, in, over the years, we've all walked some of the back ditches on the Garrison Cove properties, surveying the, the drainage problems that, that's had, and the city's spent a tremendous amount of money to get the large ditch, the big ditch in the area to, for some of the area to drain into, but what specifically I remember in seeing that is where some neighbors would run their fences into the back fence, which really creates problems, because then you have pooling and ponding and, and rocks put up next to it to keep the dogs from coming through, and before you know it, you've got a, a major problem in, in drainage. Is my recollection correct?
Yes, sir, it is. Fences in backyards, if done wrong, can be as much of a problem as a benefit. If they're up on the berm, they're less likely to be the problem because they're less likely to impede the drainage.
Well, I've just seen fences in Garrison Cove cause all kinds of drainage problems, and, and that sends a flag that says if we do it again, are we going to have some more of the exact same problems?
That's one reason why I advocate the site plan approach, or can be the best point to, to review that. That's when we're taking a holistic look at the grading, the placement of units, and we're in a better position to evaluate how it's going to affect the land. Right now, at the zoning stage, it sounds good to have a fence, but it, it may be best to wait to the site plan stage when we actually have a development, rather than just a, the idea for a development.
Chairman, with that experience, I, out there, seeing those ditches and, and some of the problems, I'd like to just wait till the site plan and see, see what happens on that, because if we draw a line and say we need a fence today, it, there are going to be problems created.
Mr. Aitlott, do we have the opportunity to require a fence at the site plan review level if we feel that's appropriate at that time?
I, yes, I, I think that we do, because that's actually can be part of the buffering, and the planning commission has the ability to place additional conditions of buffering. And knowing the development team here, I believe that they're very, they're listening to you, what you're saying about the fence, and listen to the neighbors, and they, they want to affect a good development. Mr. Beavers, y'all have no problems with looking at the fence at the site plan stage, do you? He says, no, sir, absolutely not.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other comments, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved for approval, subject to all comments.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. We'll go into new business in which we have one item under new business, that being the zoning ordinance amendment in Section 24, Article 4, H1 Historic District, Historic Zoning Commission is the applicant. Mr. Aitlott, I presume you're going to take this?
Yes, and I'm going to have maybe a little backup from Mr. Ives if he feels I don't cover it completely. The, the Historic Zoning Commission has a desire to be able to have a, an understanding of what is happening within the area that is contained within the East Main Historic Zoning District, and because of that, they are urging the planning commission and city council to amend the zoning ordinance that would give them the opportunity to see plans that would be for things that happen within the public plans, the public streets of the Historic Zoning District. They have forwarded to the planning commission a, an amendment. Our legal department actually drafted it, but it was really, I think there may have been some reluctance on their part on one hand, but on the other, they're certainly wanting to be responsive to the Historic Zone Commission, and they have forwarded to you for your consideration. Your consideration would entail having a public hearing and formulating a recommendation for our city council, and that's if, all that we would ask you to do tonight would be to schedule a public hearing for this. Certainly, if you have questions, we want to answer them. We have a couple of people here tonight who can help answer that if you have more desire to know. One of them would be, of course, Mr. Ives, our Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Robert Lewis, who is the staff person assigned to Historic Zoning Commission, and of course, Mr. Howard Wilson, who is our member of the planning commission, who currently serves on the Historic Zoning Commission. So with that, I have introduced this subject to you. You ultimately will need to schedule it for a public hearing.
What do we have on our agenda for April 7?
We have nothing on our agenda for April 7 that I'm aware of.
Good, let's keep that one.
No, I think by, I think, I think we're going to have some more things by then.
Okay. I'll try.
There is nothing particularly rushing this, if you're, if you're curious on that, so April 7 would be an appropriate date.
I would move that we set a public hearing for April 7.
Second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Other businesses, staff reports.
Yes, sir. I want to remind you that on March 9, that'll be next Tuesday, from 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock, the planning staff will be hosting a neighborhood meeting at the Patterson Park Community Center, Meeting Room 8. If you've never been to that Meeting Room 8, you just come in the front door and follow the yellow brick road there to the back. They have a nice little yellow walkway, you can see it. It's an easy place to find. We will be entertaining those who would like to come to learn more about historic, not historic, but about the commercial medical districts and the zoning ordinance provisions that deal with them. What we are wanting to do is to outreach to the public, to get input at this very early stage in the process. As I told the council, what we are going to do is find out what the public would like to do, so we urge the people to participate. What we're going to try to do is to help people to know how they can participate and what the facts are. We want people to have a good familiarity with the zoning map, so that they know what the districts actually are. We want them to know what the zoning ordinance says, so that they can help us come up with other ideas. We are inviting the public to send us their comments. We have set up a place on our webpage, a link to it, that you can read the questions that we have, sort of the canned questions that we've prepared, but you can also ask additional questions, or you can just write up your own comments. We want people to send us emails, we want them to give us phone calls, we want them to write us letters, we want them to communicate with us what they think. So we're going to have this opportunity next Tuesday, and we invite everybody to come. It's not a public hearing like we had tonight, it's more of an open house, so you can come anytime during that time period, from 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock on March 9 at the Patterson Park Community Center. If you'd like to check our webpage, that would be www.murfreesboro.tn.gov, and you can find my email address on there, as well as Ms. Ely's, who's working on this project along with me, and, and the rest of the planning staff. So please join us if you can, and tell your friends, your doctors, your dentist, podiatrist, and pediatricians, all of them who might have an interest, get them to the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Aitlott. Do you have anything else?
I think that Ms. Ely has given you enough.
We've got a recognition here to recognize two special guests tonight from Youth Leadership Rutherford, from Segal High School, have Benjamin Todd and Alex Galloway. Alex and Benjamin, thank you for being here. Hope you get a good night's sleep after all this excitement here. But we want to commend you for your participation in that program. It's a very worthwhile endeavor. If Mr. Young would have had that when he was young, he could have amounted to something there. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment, planning staff, Ms. Ely. It's well-publicized on the meeting for May, March 9. I saw several signs en route to this meeting tonight.
Thank you. I hope you also heard Mr. Aitlott's interview on the radio the day before yesterday.
With your new eyes, I'm sure that you consider the signs well.
Oh, yeah.
Any other business tonight, Mr. Aitlott?
No, sir.
Mr. Ives, Ms. Ely?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Nope. Other business, we stand adjourned.